And they have 16 deaths. And in the state of Illinois, for positive, they have 5,994. Negative, they have 29,231. And deaths in the state of Illinois, they have 99. So that's the latest. And the governor again will be giving her press conference as she does Monday through Friday at 2:30. And we will be informed of any new cases with her presentation. We do, or I did include in the agenda, the COVID-19 screening tool. And this is what the communicable disease nurses throughout the state of Iowa, and I believe the state of Illinois also follows. But I know every state has a different format. But this is the one that is provided by the Iowa Department of Public Health. All counties, all counties, communicable disease nurses use this tool. We did have some questions about our contact tracing. And if you look through the tool, you'll be able to see all of the questions that are asked, all of the information about their travel, who they've been associated with, all the way down the line. Now, and that's how they go and contact additional people. Iowa Department of Public Health may actually step in on individual cases to request additional testing, or to request additional assessments, or interviews, or whatever the case may be. But that's only on a per case. They do not do that for all of them. Once the communicable disease nurse has gone through this whole entire tool, and has contacted those appropriate people, they are required by the next day, it's either at noon or 4 o'clock, I'm drawing a blank. But it's by the next day, they have to enter all of this data into the Iowa Department of Public Health record system, so that they have that. And then, if the person is indeed positive, or has been associated with someone that has been positive, and they've been placed in quarantine, the communicable disease nurses have to follow up with those individuals at least once a day to check their temperatures, and it's all by phone, to check their temps, to see if they're experiencing any symptoms. And then, all of that data for that day also has to be entered into the IDPH data system by the next day, either at noon or at 4 o'clock. As you know, we still are not real rich in volume with our testing kits across the state of Iowa. And we're also still seeing some of our test results are taking longer than what we wish that they would. And that's basically out of our control. The hygienic lab takes the tests and runs the tests as they come in. So if there's a backlog, you just kind of have to wait until, you know, that county's test gets in to be. Now, I do know that some tests are being actually taken up to the Mayo Clinic. But right now, even they are on a backlog. So they're a little bit shorter for the results to come back, but not by much. But that's with all of the healthcare providers. And again, it's not just for Dubuque County, but it's across the state of Iowa. And I do know that the Iowa Department of Public Health has been working, well, as you probably have heard on the news, to get additional tests, as well as to speed up that process. I am also certain that Stacy Killian is going to be doing a story with the Telegraph Herald, explaining the screening tool, or either she or else one of the communicable disease nurses will, explaining to the public what our process is. Because again, we want to lower as much anxiety and tension as we can preventively. So if someone were to have a test, and if it were to be positive, we're hoping that by at least being knowledgeable of this form, and the format, and what the process is, that it may help individuals not be as tense when they do get that result, that their COVID test did come back positive. So be looking at that in the media as well, even this week. You've probably all heard, and Dave Baker, you did a wonderful job at the press release. We know that there was high anxiety with the public. Are our hospitals ready? Are our health cares ready? If we have to, if we do experience a surge with all of this. And I'm hoping everyone had a chance to hear what all of our CEOs from Mercy and Finley, Grand River Medical Associates, the message basically, besides their individual site, was loud and clear that they're talking with their counterparts, if they do have another facility in a city close by, as well as they're talking to each other here in Dubuque. They don't want any barriers to be placed if we were to experience a surge. We, and we're very thankful for this. And I think the message was loud and clear that our CEOs are already talking. They're communicating. They're all here to help each other, and they're all here to help the residents of Dubuque County, if and when that is needed. So I was very appreciative of that. And Dave, just on a side note, I don't know if you heard Ron Steele from KWWL. He quoted you, and I love your quote. And that's, "You're not stuck at home, you are safe at home." And that is so, so true. We cannot get that message out loud and clear, and wide enough to everyone in the state of Iowa, as well as the US. Let's see here, just a couple more things that I was going to share. We have had numerous phone conferences. Tom will probably share with the fire department's meeting conference last night that we had. I participated in a brain health phone conference yesterday. It has been busy, I'll just say that. I guess I'll just end it there, if there's any questions. Because we do have an Iowa Department of Public Health webinar that is occurring right now. And I apologize, I did get ahold of Dawn, just to tell her that it does look as though on Wednesdays, they are going to continue our 10 o'clock webinars. So if anything can be changed in the future for this meeting, Tom, if not, Tom and I would just request if your agenda would be, you know, like an hour, if we could be placed on the end instead of the beginning, so. So any specific questions that anyone has? Oh, and I just wanted to share one other thing, I'm sorry. I did talk with Stacy, and since we began our phone calling at the VNA, they have had a total of 721 calls. And that's averaging about 80 calls a day. And I have had so much feedback from people who have actually called down, how appreciative they have been that that system is in place. And then, over the weekend, I did ask Stacy how many, because that was our first. This past weekend, that we did expand the 8 to 6 call-in for Saturday and Sunday. And because of the newness, we did only average 35 calls a day. So I anticipate that those numbers will be going up once people do know that that's an option to call now over the weekend. And I think I shared with you on Monday that Stacy and I did converse, and she is going to be adding a second nurse on call, a communicable disease nurse on call over the weekend, because we had such high numbers this past weekend that we're anticipating with the slowness of the test results, and everything else that might come to be. It's just better to be safe than have an additional person on call if need to be. So, anything?
Thank you, Patrice. And I do have a question for you. As a matter of fact, I might have a couple of them here.
Sure.
All right, I was on a brain health stakeholders call, and yesterday. And one of the concerns that was raised, and it was too late to get it on the agenda for today, so I think it's fitting, though, to bring it up during this, is if we could get a little more information out there on shopping stuff. In other words, what are folks supposed to do with their, you know, we know you're supposed to wash your produce and all that. What about packaged goods, and that type of thing? And it wasn't, you know, the people asking the question, I think, knew what to do. But we have to assume that not everybody knows that. So is that something that the committee can look at, maybe getting some information out there? I have noticed, and I don't know if it's from the state, or if some federal funds are starting to go through, but I have noticed that there is some advertising, some public awareness-type ads going on, on TV and radio. So that was just, that was brought to my attention, I'm passing that along.
Sure, and I share that with our chick, because we do do our daily updates. So that would be a good thing to, and Mary Rose does her Facebook episode, you know, for five minutes every day as well. So thank you, yes, that's a good idea.
Okay, and then I have regarding some playground concerns or issues. It was about two days ago, it was a really nice day, and I was getting calls that there were dozens of kids playing basketball at Asbury Park and Comiskey Park. Asbury, of course, and Dubuque. And I'm sure there were others, but these are who I was getting the calls on. And so I did contact Mayor Adams, and they have removed the basketball hoops in Asbury. I do not have an update from the city of Dubuque as to what they're doing. So, but I did contact Mayor Buell and City Manager Van Milligan about that. And it wasn't, the report was, it wasn't one kid shooting hoops. It was five-on-five with another group looking like they were waiting to come in. So that is obviously, it's hard to play good defense and exhibit social distancing at the same time. So I think Mayor Adams and the folks in Asbury are to be commended. They, you know, they saw a problem, and they, their temporary solution is to remove the hoops, because the message apparently wasn't out there for those young folks, and possibly their parents.
So Dave, what Asbury did was, they took down the nets. They took down the nets. But what they also did was, they wrapped around, they've got caution tape all over. There's a park right behind me. So the kids' play equipment is now closed with caution tape, at least on two city parks. So I think, you know, those notes came in, and I think the city's doing a great job trying to be proactive as well.
And I did also receive calls, and not just, including Asbury, but also with some establishments that appeared to be open. And I had talked with Jill Kennedy, oh, I don't even know when I talked to him, last week, I believe. And he had told me that if we were to get any calls, we need to have those people just contact their local law enforcement, especially if it's a group, you know, eight or 10, if it's larger than that, or if a business is open, that the local law enforcement then will go in to investigate those situations. So, so thank you for calling, at least the mayor too, as well. And I'm glad that they did, they are proactive, and they're using tape and everything else, so. Sad to say, when we want kids to exercise, which they can still do, you know, by keeping their six-foot distance, so.
Right, in the, as you recall, Patrice, in the press conference the other day, I made a point to let people know that we have wonderful, Dubuque County, and then various cities and towns have wonderful parks and trails that they can get their exercise and still maintain their social spacing or distancing. And it's just that, you know, you know, and I don't want to sound like the Grinch, again, when it comes to the young folks playing basketball. But the message has to get out there, because as we all know, those young folks may go and visit grandma and grandpa, and spread the virus, and cause a serious health condition, or worse, you know, of course innocently. But it just tells us that we have more work to do.
That's right, thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
Patrice, Professor Baker.
Patrice, Professor Baker. I do have a couple of questions. One was just addressed prior to the start of this meeting, when Dave said, where are we with wearing masks out in public or not? I do not know what's being recommended by the IDPH right now. And the other question is, the other question I have, are you speaking? Oh, the other question I have-
I was going to answer, but I'll wait.
No, well, I'll just give you the other question. One, I did, I did talk to Terry Goodman and Mary Rose Corrigan last week, because they were still mall walking with large volumes of individuals. Probably the average age was 82 that was going in there to mall walk. That's all I have, thank you.
Okay, and I can follow up with the masks. I know that Cedar Rapids, or Mercy and Cedar Rapids, I'm sorry, is, they're actually promoting people to wear masks outside. I didn't see that until last night, and I copied, it was online. And I did copy that article, and I sent it to our state epidemiologist. And I said, can you put this on the webinar today that we're having right now? Because I said, this, you know, we have not had any information on this at all. So once I find, you know, are we supposed to be promoting it? Are we not supposed to be promoting it? I sure can let everyone know. And then, as far as the mall walker, thank you for letting the city officials know. Because, I mean, that's our most vulnerable population. We want them to exercise, but is the mall with other people the appropriate place to do it? So thanks, Diane.
And this is Diane Higgin. I also have one question for you, Patrice.
Sure.
I'd heard that there might be an availability soon, I think of 15 units or machines that can do the rapid testing, and I don't know if that was statewide. Do you know if there will be any availability in Dubuque County soon?
Actually, it's my understanding that yes, that is a possibility. But what the holdup is, they will be getting the machine. And I do have a noon conference with the hospitals this afternoon. So if I have additional information, I can share it at our Board of Health meeting tonight. But it's my understanding that as far as the in-service, the educating on the program itself, as well as the setup, and they have to, I believe, get some type of an authorization before they can, and it's not just for Dubuque County, this is statewide, before they can actually utilize that machine, that even though the machine might be there, it's still going to be some time before they can actually get it up and running. But yes, it's my understanding that at least the hospitals will have it, if not other healthcare providers. But I'll follow up with that at my noon phone conference.
Okay, thank you.
Uh huh, thank you.
Patrice, Dave Baker, kind of as a follow-up to Diane's questions. You're going to get back to us on the masks while in public, because a few weeks ago, they were saying preserve masks for the care providers, healthcare providers. I, myself, have been pretty studious following national news channels. And it seems like it's now going back the other way, to where masks may help, and, you know, in keeping the person wearing the mask safe, and the people that, you know, in case they're unbeknownst to them infected, it might help. So if you could, I think that's pretty important stuff for you to report back on. Then the other thing was, are you going to check with the mall? And then, if you're going to do that, I believe the ICE arena in town is another place. And I would think that the rule of 10 and six-foot spacing would apply. But I'm not the ultimate authority on that. If you could check with maybe IDPH, and get a ruling on that? Is, you know, if there's 200 people at Kennedy Mall walking, is that okay? I don't know, even if they're six feet apart. So I think that deserves an answer, and I would appreciate if you would check on that.
Absolutely, and I have a feeling that would go under the mass gathering, such as funeral. Well, I will check, I'll check to make sure.
Thank you.
I will be glad for that, you're welcome.
Other questions for Patrice? Tom, I see you're queued up, do you have a question?
No, I do not have a question.
All right, if not, we'll move to Tom Berger. Oh, Tom's not on, okay, my bad. Other questions or comments? I guess I'll go to Supervisors McDonough and Wickham. Any questions or comments at this point?
I have a question that's coming in from just general population. Someone sent this to me, they wanted to know, Patrice, we don't have, do we have any role in, you know, medical judgment? There's some comment that a New York doctor is saying young people should be put on ventilators earlier than later. I don't imagine we have involvement in that, but that was a question they had. You know, are the, do you know if we're following best practices in terms of, this person has a family member or a friend who's on a, who's maybe not yet on a vent, but very young?
That's beyond my knowledge. I, I'll see if I can find something, but yeah, that, I don't know how to respond to that, Anne, I'm sorry.
No, that is a response, that it's beyond what we're doing as an emergency response.
Right, yes.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any questions.
Thanks, Anne. Jane Wickham, Supervisor Wickham, any questions for Patrice?
Not at this time.
Okay, all right, we'll go to item two, I'm going to check with Dawn. Dawn, anything else under the county emergency response team portion before we move on?
Nope, we can move on.
All right, going to item two on the agenda, 2A, CDBG grant application. Dawn, do you want to report on that?
Yeah, this is for informational purposes. We did submit that grant to the state yesterday. So what was included in the packet was what we, our final numbers.
Who's this? Oh.
Somebody will please mute their mic. Thank you.
So our total grant request is $370,012. There is 1 point, or 2.1, I think, million that is available. So as soon as we get an update from the state, we will pass that information along, as well as to our partners.
What?
Okay. All right.
Yeah, they're, um-
Can you tell who's talking there?
I think I just muted him.
Okay, thank you. We were getting some background, I don't know if anybody else was hearing it, but, okay. We will move on then to the next item on the agenda. This is item 2B, the Board of Supervisor Employment Options. And I do have an update from the other day. I think it came out after the agenda was pushed. It was that the DCIA has withdrawn their proposal under this portion of the agenda. And I do have some thoughts on this. I have, at this point, you know, been listening to the discussion. If this, you know, if it's an emergency situation, my feeling is, we should move quickly on this, put an interim tag on this. And my suggestion is going to be nine months. And there's a couple of different reasons for that. One, I think that's enough time to, you know, work through the emergency and the aftermath, and then give sufficient time for the board to decide, you know, if the position is, you know, warranted, if it should be long-term. And if the answer to that is yes, then I would defer to our Human Resource Director, Dawn Sherman, for a full search process, and whatever amount of time that would take. And also, that it coincides with, and this may not be here nor there, but I'm in my first term, and my term expires on December 31st. And I think, you know, either I would be involved then in a decision, or someone else, maybe. So I think nine months, I'm recommending. And that we make an offer to Mr. Ed Raiber to fill that position. I do understand, he has considerable experience in a similar role after the floods from 2008, when he was with Washington County. And it sounds like he would be able to hit the ground running. But again, right now, we have, that's really what we have in front of us. So I'm going to make a motion, and then we can have discussion. I'll make a motion that we, on an interim basis, extend an employment offer to Ed Raiber for a period of nine months. And that, you know, he'd be considered a regular, limited-term employee. And then, we do a full work search whenever Dawn Sherman decides that she would need to do that, to have that in place by January 1, if indeed, we decide to go forward with that. And that the position, that Mr. Raiber would be an at-will employee. So if there were issues with performance, there would be no, you know, there wouldn't be any strings attached, it wouldn't be difficult, you know, in the relationship, so. So I'll put that out there as a motion.
I will second that.
Okay, there is a second, now we're open for discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion?
I do actually have discussions, if I might.
Okay, I waited.
I was kind of pausing, well, right. And so, that's why I guess I'm waiting, Supervisor Wickham didn't jump in. So my points would be this, I think before we would do this, we should get the recommendation of our HR administrator about whether or not this is, the way she would recommend that we proceed, that we hire a specific person. That would be, my first question would go to Dawn Sherman about her recommendation about making an immediate hire, based on the process that you understand we followed so far.
Dawn, I think that question is addressed to you.
I'm happy to answer that. And I think I've discussed this a couple of times, is this would not be a normal search. Time is not our friend right now. So in normal circumstances, you would cast a wide net, find the most qualified, best fit for your needs. But what the feedback, I- But what the feedback I have been receiving from the board is that time is of the essence. We want somebody here to help navigate through this crisis. And so if that is the case, you take a different recruitment strategy. And in this one, it seems to be that there has been a candidate identified to be able to, who has the skill set to fill that role. I would recommend, similar to what Supervisor Baker has proposed, that it would be an interim to be able to see how you would utilize this position on a permanent basis. Take the time to see, again, see how you're utilizing it. And then do a full recruitment in which this candidate, you know, would, would obviously be more than welcome to participate in it and, and have a competitive process to see who is the, the permanent right fit. Or at the end of this, to see if this position's needed at all, or if you need to, to change it. And at that time, you would go through a full recruitment. So, you know, it's, you're, you're trying to fill an immediate, short-term need. And this is a way to do that, is to identify someone who you all agree with, place them, and then give you some time to do a more long-term solution recruitment.
So it seems to me that if there's any reservation about the candidate or about the process, the way forward would be no.
You, as the board, have to decide if this person is the right fit. I, I am not familiar. I've only spoken with Mr. Raiber once, so I, I cannot give any feedback or recommendation for that. But from accounts from the, two of the supervisors, they feel that he's the right fit. I, I trust in their judgment on that. But you, as a board, need to make sure that this is who you need, because you're the ones who are going to be utilizing him the most.
Would it be possible, Dawn, for you to review three, four, five very short-term candidates with the job description that we've prepared to see if, in fact, the candidates meet the criteria that we've set forth? I mean, I, we don't know, as far as I know, I've not interviewed Mr. Raiber to know if he fits the criteria. I've not done that with any particular person. We know that we have many folks who have employment uncertainty. Even a brief or a modified search being done by yourself could help us know that we've followed some HR protocol, even on an emergency basis. We've waited two weeks at this point.
I could do that, and I'd be happy to do that. But again, this person has to be the right fit for the board. So for me to interview them, I could, you know, obviously do telephone interviews to, to gauge their, their ability to perform these, these responsibilities. But it also, you need to have some interaction with them, you know, to call, I would, you know, recommend calling references to, to have candid conversations with people who they have worked with in the past. Because right now, on paper, a lot of people are going to qualify for this position. It's really looking to hear what their experiences are and are they a fit to what you need.
So I have not done that. I have not, I don't know if you're suggesting we would individually call references? Is that what you're saying? Even to be sure that we're sure about any particular candidate? That would be a supervisor-level recommendation that you want us to do?
Uh, no. I, I think through a regular recruitment, that would be me doing that, and, and maybe with one of you, and providing feedback in a report on the reference checks. But again, this is a, this is a fluid situation. And then I see this as a, a temporary solution. And so if you need this person in, in place quickly, you identify a person. And I say you, as the board, identify a person who you feel meets the needs. And however you determine that, I know some of you have worked with him, some of you have worked with others that he's worked with and have talked to them. If you feel confident in his ability to do this job, move forward, knowing that we are going to have discussions in the coming months, once this crisis winds down and you go through your after-action plans, that we look at it to determine what the long-term solution is.
Right, but I've never asked Mr. Raiber any of these questions. I've never asked, you know, our job descriptions, two pages. We, we've, I have not, and I don't know if either of my colleagues have had discussion with Mr. Raiber specific to what we've identified as a potential, as a, maybe this is a potential job description. I don't even know that this has been finalized, so. And, and that being said, it seems that, again, it's, it's, we've waited two weeks. It seems a little precipitous and not something that I have consensus on at this time. I'm not comfortable going forward without some HR directions, even to do an immediate hire. We've done, as far as I know, no reference checks, no, no matching of qualifications. There could be individuals that might be aware in the community, who might want to know that they would have a week to apply. I think we should be very cautious of just selecting someone without having looked at credentials and, and done even our own good faith and our own, our own review. I've not done that.
Okay, I, I'm going to jump in. Is there any more discussion? I will say this, I did take the initiative to reach out to Mr. Raiber. Feel very comfortable with his qualifications, having gone through the 2008 floods as a county executive official. And this is an emergency situation. I have talked to Dawn about this. It would take weeks and weeks to do this, which goes away from the emergency nature of it. So I'm ready to proceed with the vote, so.
Can I ask you, Dave, what it is that?
If, if you have something new to add, Anne, please do so, otherwise I think we know where you stand.
It, this isn't about standing, and it's not about opinion. This is about asking you in discussion, what have you learned? I mean, it's awkward to have this conversation in the public eye about a person. But in, in light of the job description, we're talking about some communication pieces here and relationships with media and the press. You know, have you, can you, you tell me, other than the floods, what it is that you want this person to do? And why this is the final, the one and only and final candidate? That's what I guess I'm asking. It's like, how did you come to your conclusion?
Uh, by reaching out to him and talking to him and, and listening to his past experience, looking at his resume, which you should have had a copy of for the last week or two. And I am very comfortable with this emergency hire. And also having discussed with Dawn Sherman that to go to even a limited search would take weeks, if not months. And to me, that then is not an emergency hire. We're in the emergency right now. And so I am, and, and I was the one that was not in favor of adding a position. But I do believe that Mr. Raiber can be an asset and help us through this emergency. And then we will determine.
I'm getting.
At some point, because I put a provision in my motion for nine months.
Supervisor Baker, are you seeing the chat come in, just even from our own employees, about whether or not this person's completed any basic background checks? Is other, are county employees going to have the opportunity to apply for this position? I think that if we, knowing where you stand, having this be delayed until we actually even have the answers to our own employees coming up with questions, I think that that's a good resource that we might even be ignoring and overstepping even our own bounds as supervisors.
I'm ready for the vote, Chair. I have no further discussion on the matter.
Thank you, Anne. I will ask this, Dawn, are there any, prior to having Mr. Raiber be hired, would there be a background check done? And what kind of timeframe does that take?
Um, usually it takes about 24 to 48 hours, and we can do one on that. When would you like this employment to begin?
I, I would leave that up to you. I would say we're in an emergency situation as soon as possible, subject to background.
Yeah, because I can have an offer letter done today that would have subject to, condition upon passing a background check. So I can have that ready today, that we can start him as soon as that check is done.
I would leave that up to you.
So is the, 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 the job description that we put together, is that our final job description? I mean, we have not taken board action on the job description for the, do we want to have any discussion about the job description?
I don't want to have that today. There's a motion on the floor. If you want to have discussion on that, we can put that on for another meeting. We can certainly adjust the, the job description, just like we can in, of any other position.
What typically value would?
Any other discussion?
Yes, I'm asking, please.
All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Carry two to one. All right. Next up on the agenda is the Rickardsville Loan Agreement. You should have something in your packet. And Dawn, do you want to, I'll go to you to give us the details on this.
Thank you. Rickardsville has provided us with an agreement. You've had a previous discussion with their clerk, and I believe it was the mayor, about this loan. And so they have drafted up a proposal. So we provided it on, in your packet for you to review. We don't need to take any action today. However, they are having a council meeting tonight to review this, the, the city of Rickardsville is. So we have Mary Ann Knapp, I believe, on, and I can unmute her. She is their clerk. So they are looking to some, if there's some feedback from the board, if this looks like something you'd be supportive of, she can give that feedback to her council this evening. And then if they sign off on it, we can bring that back at our next meeting for board approval.
So, Dawn, who created this agreement?
Um, I received this from their clerk, Mary Ann Knapp.
Okay.
So my understanding.
I would.
We're not taking action on this. We're developing consensus, because this has to go to the Rickardsville Council for their approval first, before we take formal action. But I think we're looking for consensus from the Board of Supervisors for the five-year payback contract. And I think Rickardsville and, and Mary Ann Knapp want to know if we have consensus on this before they take it to their board, to their council.
Mary Ann, I have you unmuted. Do you have anything additional to share with the board?
Nope, that's exactly correct. Making sure that that payback schedule looks okay. And then the council would approve tonight, or we can make changes if there's a, a different consensus.
Okay, so I, I support this. But I'm only one of three.
Mary Ann, this is Supervisor Jay Wickham. I, I definitely would support this, and I, I feel your, your plight as far as having the highway go through and facing your city with unprecedented debt and/or dollar amounts related to this. So definitely would support that, and would want to hear your council's reaction and favorable agreement to this loan agreement, and then bring it back to us. But tell the city of Rickardsville and all the city council members and Mayor Dan that they have my support.
Mary Ann, my questions are a little more broad-ranging, which is, the request is $100,000. You know, I have been in favor of providing some assistance to Rickardsville for some length of time here. Would be good to know that if you're sending a message back to your council, that this is, in fact, what they feel is the, what they need the county to do at this time. So I guess that's the, my communication back is, I am willing to be of any assistance I can be, but without knowing what the council wishes and what the mayor wants. You know, I don't know where you are as clerk, if you're carrying the message and the communication, or if this is where we are because it's a pandemic, or what your timeframe is. So I would have hoped we'd had an update in addition to just the loan agreement. But if this is what's helpful to them and most needed, I'm not going to stand, stand in the way.
Very good question, Anne. We had a meeting on the 23rd and discussed different options, three, four, five, six years. And this is what the council voted on. They wanted to propose to you guys, the board, to, to make sure that that was acceptable terms. This was their preferred. Then we drafted the agreement. It's on our council meeting for approval tonight, unless there's any changes from the Board of Supervisors.
Right, and so what we're trying to do is get you the ability to have some cash flow with, you know, longer-term payments of return.
Correct. Correct.
So Anne, are you on board on the consensus for this?
Yes, I'm, consensus that this is, the board should help. If this is what they wish to do, I would support this.
Okay, thank you. And the fact that the mayor and the city council and Mary Ann are bringing this, bringing this to us, I trust that they know the city of Rickardsville better than anybody. So again, I fully support this, and I'm glad that we're in position to help. So it sounds like to me that we have full consensus, unanimous consensus of the Board of Supervisors for this. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, all of you.
Thank you, Mary Ann.
All right. I have another item, probably should have brought it up under Agenda Item 1, but I have so many notes on my agenda that I missed it, so I'm going to run back. We have the Identify, Plan, Act with the three teams from the private sector, health, business, community. We do have, I was contacted, and I, I believe I shared this, Mr. Art Roach does have a, he's, has a background in, in the health industry, retired, willing to volunteer. And I'm just not sure how we're handling this. If, should we be handling this as a county board? Is there somebody, I guess I want to know who to hook him up with to tap his expertise? And he could probably fit under any of the team headings, health, business, community. And I think he'd be a valuable asset. So I guess for Anne and Jay, and maybe you have others that have stepped up as well. And there, there might be some already functioning informally. So if somebody wants to update me so that I can let Mr. Roach know about what's needed from him. And much appreciate his willing, willingness to volunteer. Supervisors McDonough or Wickham?
I think it's wonderful that people are stepping forward and asking to help. So that's a really good first sign. And I'd certainly support that.
Okay. All right, thank you. I'll get ahold of Mr. Roach and tell him that his volunteer service is welcomed. All right, is there anything else to be brought before us today?
Actually, I do have some questions. Dawn is going to extend a letter to Mr. Raiber. We should probably discuss compensation. That is a term of disagreement that we will need to, to discuss. So she can. So she can put forth some kind of offer. So being, does anyone want to go back and look at that issue as part of a contract?
So on the job description, I did have on there an annualized salary of $80,000 plus full benefit package. So that's what I was proposing for the salary of it. But that again, at the direction of the board, if that's the direction you want me to go.
That was the presumption, because I do have that in front of me. The presumption that it would be prorated based on an $80,000 salary. And so whatever that amounts to per week or pay period, however, whatever the case is, would be my recommendation. And that was part of my motion.
What was part of your motion, that he would be paid
I was looking at
plus a fringe benefit?
I was looking at the same document that you have, Ann.
But it's never, that document had never been approved. It never actually had been fully discussed, so. How is it now? You said we'd put it on for a later Agenda item.
I will ask Dawn how she wants to handle this. It was, it says, the first thing, if you read it, I don't know if you did, it says salary, $80,000 annually plus full benefits. So I don't know how it could be any more clear than that. So that's what I based my motion to proceed on. Okay? So I guess, you know, we have to move fast on this. It was brought up as an emergency hire. And so I felt we had the information in front of us.
So then where does the funding for this come from? Where does the funding, what account are we going to be using for this? Are we going to be appropriating additional funds? What are we doing?
Do we have Budget Director Runde on?
Yes, we would have to appropriate additional funds, and see if Stella can.
So we'd need to know the full compensation cost?
We appropriated $500,000 for COVID-19 in the general fund just a couple meetings ago, so I think we have it covered.
So it would come from that money then, Supervisor Wickham, is that what we're thinking?
Would be logical to me.
And I know that Stella and I have been talking about putting together, you know, some spreadsheets to look for, trying to follow those dollars and be sure that we're getting information back where it's being spent, so.
Right, and there is a potential. Is Stella on? Is she unmuted?
Yes, Stella is unmuted.
Stella, many of these expenses will be eligible for reimbursement from FEMA, is that correct?
That's why we're tracking all of these things separately, with the hope that we would be able to request some reimbursement on any of these emergency funding items.
Okay, thank you. All right, is there anything else to be brought up? Not
We have to talk about meeting schedules when we're going to meet.
Are we good for next Monday, or do you want to have a meeting sooner? And with that, if, you know, if you decide you don't want to meet Friday and something, you know, if, I guess, we're in an emergency situation. But if we have something that boils up, we could meet on Saturday or Sunday and still have time to get notice out on Friday. So I just wanted to throw that out there. So I'm certainly willing to do
I'm okay on, I'm okay on Monday, but I do have one other item that I'd like to address before we adjourn. But on this topic, I'm fine if we meet on Monday at 10:00.
Okay. How about if we leave it with, we'll meet on Monday as scheduled and subject to a call for an emergency or special meeting if needed? We have consensus on that? Does that sound okay?
Sounds good to me.
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Wickham, you had an issue?
Yeah, Deputy Backensted sent out courthouse data. And I don't know if Dawn has that, if she can bring the spreadsheet up, but we're increasing.
Dawn, can you, Dawn, can you send that to Ben Fisher at the Telegraph Herald as well?
Yes.
Thank you.
It's gonna take me a minute to bring it up on the screen.
Okay, great.
Ashley, would you like that mailed, or would you want a paper copy of? We're tracking the people in and out the front and back door. Okay, we'll I think I printed one, so I'll grab it. Okay, sorry for the delay. We have those numbers, the courthouse access data is up on the screen. Media has been provided with this, the media that are participating. And Supervisor Wickham, you have any comments or questions?
I just didn't know if Supervisor McDonough wanted Ben Fisher to comment.
Excuse me? Pardon? I didn't hear that?
Let's, let's just review the data and
Well, could we read back the question?
The, so the question I would have for my colleagues, I've been on the side of trying to restrict access to the courthouse. I believe generally speaking, my colleagues have been staunch supporters of keeping the courthouse open. So my question is, why is the, why are more people coming to the courthouse from the public? What is driving that? We're seeing an increase in traffic, which is exactly the opposite of what we want. And so maybe between CJ and Shane or other elected officials, why are more people going to the courthouse festival?
I can comment. I think part of the increase on the numbers, at least from Monday and Tuesday, were end-of-the-month tax-related, more people just coming down anticipating paying those taxes either in person. We have seen an increase even in people just coming down, just dropping things off, not coming in. As far as the increase in the number where people actually met with somebody, I can't really say. They were pretty averaged out. We have departments, or people from every department, coming down, meeting with someone. Security is just advising people when they show up, if they have questions, they need to contact that individual department, being pointed to the numbers. If someone is choosing to come down and meeting with someone, that is their discretion or what the need is, I'm not sure. We're trying not to, I guess, act as an interim between the departments and the people that they're meeting with.
We have Recorder Murphy with us. Maybe we could unmute him and ask him if there's any information he wants to provide about more contact, end-of-the-month, anything that would drive more people to your office?
Can you hear me?
Nope.
Is Recorder Murphy unmuted? You should be unmuted, John.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. I mean, those numbers for tax purposes, that would be the treasurer's office, obviously at the end of the month for those tax payments. For, for us, you know, I, we've been doing everything we can to minimize our communications in person and in the vestibule area there. But, you know, the current expectation is that we try to do everything we can through the mail or online. But there are, some of our documents require notaries and trying to assist those customers in many different situations. To get that notary, we've been trying to meet them there at the vestibule, get that signature notarized for the document, accept the document, and move on. But we've, we've been doing what we can to minimize all of our contacts.
And I'll just comment. When, I think it's, seems like two years ago, but about two weeks ago, when County Treasurer Stearman was here talking about thousands of people coming in. I would think that, you know, if we look at the, under the front door access, entered courthouse and security checkpoint six, I think that would be considered a success. You know, we have, obviously, word hasn't gotten out to everybody. Not everybody has, you know, access to the internet. And so we had 68 people apparently showed up Tuesday, 66 on Monday. And Shane Backensted, if I'm understanding this correctly, these numbers include people who may have come to the door and then dropped their thing in the drop box. Is that correct?
The numbers as far as the 66, 68, those are people that physically came in the building, either probably inquired with us, read things over, called the department, then may have done something and left. This is not counting anyone that is just outside the building, just throws their stuff in the drop box and move on. There's probably still hundreds of people doing that on a daily basis that are coming down just to the drop box on the exterior and dropping things in there. The departments, multiple departments are sending people down to empty the drop boxes, probably hourly. They're usually taking paperwork out of that drop box. As to the numbers physically coming in the courthouse and the checkpoint, most of those are court-related. There are a few that were contractors, where someone needed to come in to work on something. Most of that is court-related, be it domestic hearings or various emergency hearings where people or attorneys that needed to come in for in custody's appearing by the video system.
Okay. All right, and, and, you know, the outside, or excuse me, the inside doors to the courthouse are locked, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so the courthouse is locked.
Right, just those exterior doors are open. Multiple departments have envelopes, paperwork, things sitting out there for people that are coming into access that anticipate coming down, making a tax payment or something, and then they'll just put it in an envelope, go back out, put it in a drop box after they learn that they're closed and they can't come in.
Okay, thank you.
But that seems to be working well, Shane, that they're just putting it in the drop box. That's what we want them to do, right?
Yeah, for the most part, people are getting it. We're trying to let people figure it out on their own. There's plenty of material there to read as far as what the departments are directing. People typically want to speak with someone, so they'll knock on the window, we'll try and help them out, but we're directing everyone just to contact the department.
Right. Just in today's TH, we have three domestics. So we need to have those folks obviously have access to the courthouse to do necessary things. So we know that it's an essential service. I, you know, I would say the courthouse will get reports back on Monday. We'll see if we have, we can show that it was a, you know, end-of-the-month property tax issue and go from there. Certainly the recorder's office is essential to do filings for real estate matters. You know, there's essential services we're gonna have to provide, and they are done here at the courthouse. I have some folks addressing with us issues of access to the West Side campus. So, you know, this is a good ongoing issue to keep aware of and informed about.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
None for me.
Dawn, do you have anything else?
Sorry, I have one thing. Patrice asked me to share this with you. She did receive a response about wearing masks in public, and it is not recommended. So I have that email up on the screen for you. She asked me to share that with this group.
So IDPH is recommending at this time that we not wear masks?
Yes, CDC and IDPH do not recommend the general public to wear masks in the public at this time.
Okay. All right, any other, any other subjects to be brought up, any other topics? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion to adjourn because our next meeting, I think Monday's a regularly scheduled meeting, isn't it? Oh, my bad, okay. Motion to recess until Monday.
Don't move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carried three zero, we are in